Palermo, Brennan, Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Ben Gray, District 2.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you take this off for a minute?
Just wanted to take just a short opportunity today just to talk, you know, very briefly about some of the mass shootings and other things that we have seen around our country. And we understand how difficult and problematic that is in this community and it's time, in my judgment and hopefully in others, that we come to some sort of a solution that everyone can live with. Because the violence that we see in our country specifically, I think it was best put by our president when he said it is embar-- we are, it is an embarrassment to the world. So I'm hoping that we all can come together and think of ways and come up with ways that everyone can live with. But we really need to address the violence that continues to occur in our communities across this nation and here in Omaha. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for being with us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please turn off or silence all electronic devices. We have a proclamation. Do we? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Item 6, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the hill located northeast of 168th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 6 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Councilor Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. With me today is Jeff Elliott with the developer. This is a development that is on the northeast corner of 168th and State Street. It's about 154 acres. It will be a 473-lot subdivision and developed in multiple phases. And there's one commercial lot and 13 outlots. We find the recommendation of the department as well as the planning board, unanimous recommendation from the planning board, obviously acceptable, so we're here for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 6 is approved, 7 to 0. Items 7 through 9 can be considered together for Hyde Heights Replat 2 located southwest of 108th Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 7, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Items 8 and 9 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
The public hearing on items 7 through 9 begin at this time. We have the applicant registered to participate by video conferencing. Eric Kerschner. Mr. Kerschner, you're recognized. Please provide your name, address, and any testimony you have.
Thank you. My name's actually Kurt Daniels with Cockard Engineering. I'm filling in for Eric today. My address is 8 East Main Street, Lynchville, Missouri, 63385.
Okay, hold on. Hold on. Do you have the spelling? Can you spell your name, please?
Kurt, K-U-R-T, Daniels, D-A-N-I-E-L-S.
Thank you. Please proceed.
What we're bringing for you tonight is a Club Car Wash, the preliminary plan we brought to you some time ago, but what we're asking today is the approval on the planning process. The first one is actually the part where we would be added to the major commercial corridor overlay district. All three are relative to the plat that was submitted, consolidating it from two lots into one. And so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we'd appreciate a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard on these three items? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 7 through 9 are approved, 7 to 0. Items 10 through 13 can be considered together for Arbor View located southeast of 216th and Ford Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 10 and 11 are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R7 District. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 13, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 10 through 13 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Voel, E&amp;A Consulting Group, the engineer on the project. Mark Sodilov is en route, but hopefully don't need him, with Charleston Homes. This is 152 acre, or 152 lot, single-family subdivision, 87 of which are single-family, and there are 65 villas located southeast of 216th and Ford. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 13 are approved, 7 to 0. Items 14 through 18 can be considered together for Lake Livin located northwest of 168th Street and Ford Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communication and opposition. Items 14 and 15 are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R7 District. Item 16, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district in an R7 District. Item 17 is a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 18, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 14 through 18 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Council. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. This is a multifamily housing project on the northwest corner of 168th and Ford Street, on approximately 120, or I'm sorry, 28 acres. There are two lots, three outlots. There's a total of 578 units, 310 units in the first phase and 268 units in the second phase. There's the usual amenities, clubhouse, swimming pool, gathering space, and of course, this is next to the lake, so it's quite a nice property for this particular project. Again, we're here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this particular rezoning and project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
My name's Mary Dogman. My address is 11766 Deer Creek Drive, Omaha, Nebraska. But we own the lot that's behind this development. And I, I don't know if I'm a proponent or opponent because I called when I got my letter in the mail. And the first letter I got was just last week. And I called the planning board to get information on the project, and I called twice and left the details on the information, and nobody responded to me. So I guess I was coming here today hoping to get some information on what was going on, and there's no information on it either. So I guess I just want you to know that I tried to make a contact and didn't, and kind of dissatisfied as a citizen.
Thank you. Mr. Jobin, why don't you come on back down while the public hearing is still open? And provide some details.
Yes, Larry, yeah, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road. We, this has been a project that's been ongoing for quite some time. We had a neighborhood meeting probably two years ago. We've been to the planning board twice on the preliminary plat and of course, on the final plat. We've been to zoning board of appeals. We've been to this council on the preliminary plat. And here we are on the final plat. So, you know, maybe, I don't know when they acquired their lot, but, but this has been vetted for a long time. In fact, I was gonna try to go back in my file here and find out when the first time it was on the planning board, but it's been around here for a long, long time. I mean, I have drawings. I have elevations.
Let's have the, in the old immortal words of someone who used to occupy this seat, "You're right, you're right, you're right," but you're gonna give us a little briefing anyway.
Yeah, oh, I'm totally fine with that. Can we turn this off?
Thank you, Mr. Jobin.
So... If you can zoom out a little bit. Oh, got it. And I've got some other colored drawings here. This is just to kind of orient you from, or to the project. So this is 168th and Ford Street. This is obviously the northwest corner. This is the lake over here. On the other side is HWS Cleveland that runs through here. This will be a public street that will be installed privately. The first phase is on the outer ring of the Ring Road, I'm sorry, the second phase is on the outer ring of the Ring Road, and the first phase is on the inside of the Ring Road. If you recall, when we talked about this, the, the site drops pretty dramatically from 168th Street down to the lake. It's, it's about a 72-foot drop down from 168th Street down to the lake. This is a PUD, so what you see is what you get as far as the landscape plan, et cetera. And I have that, and then I have some just general elevations and drawings that I can share. And I can't recall what lot you said that you owned. 80? So, what we did, if you recall, back in the, when we did the preliminary plat, both the planning board and back at council, we took views from the various lots. And this is actually the view from their lot looking to the lake, so there's no obstruction here. There's no building. This actually looks over a detention basin that's in their development, actually part of the Pier 15 development. So what we did is we went all around and I've got a plat of Pier 15 that shows the views from the lots that I'm talking about here. So what we did, when I find this plat, so we, we looked at, this is the view from Lot 80, Pier 15. So you can see that there's no buildings whatsoever in front of them. They've got a clear and obstructed view of the lake. This is from Lot 81, and I'll show you on the plat as you go south. So this is the next lot. Then you get to Lot 82, and then you start to see one of the buildings here. But if you recall, the, the building that is adjacent to this neighborhood, we made sure that it was two stories on that side and then three stories on the other side. So it effectively has the height of a, a two-story house, and, and it drops in elevation about 12 feet, I believe, down. So the idea was to try to minimize the height and the impact to the adjacent neighborhood. So that's Lot 82. This is Lot 83. So there's some garages here, there, that you can see, and you start to look over. And this is Lot 84. And so we did that all from the view of the backyard, really like the porch. And so I'll try to show you the lot configuration, if I can find that. Then I have a number of other, these are just kind of elevations from the lake looking east onto the development.
So the top left, as you look at that photo, would be Lot 80 and part of 81?
It'd be over, yes, exactly. It'd be next to it. Like I said, I have a plat that shows where we measured those from. And again, they must have just bought the lot because we did have, like I said, a number of meetings with the planning board and the council, and then of course, we had a neighborhood meeting as well. So the idea was to minimize the impacts, obviously, to the adjacent residential neighborhood of Pier 15. And we think we've done that by the height and the way we configured the buildings and, and the fact that the single-family houses that are probably closest have an unobstructed view mostly of, of the lake, so.
Thank you. Why don't you stick around?
Sure.
You might want to give your card to Mrs. Dodd.
I can do that.
Are there any other opponents wishing to be heard on these items of the agenda? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Mr. Jobin, would you, and not just give a card, but maybe would you be able to meet with Ms. Doddman after this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because maybe she would like to see where you took the picture from her lot of 80, which is good that there's no obstruction there.
Right.
Maybe give her a little more detail and be able to answer all of the questions that they may have. And I understand that maybe you met, but sometimes neighbors don't get notices and, and things happen. And, and it doesn't sound, they, you know, they took the time to come down here and it doesn't even sound like they came down to object, just, I may object, I just need more information.
I'm happy to meet with them. And again, the Pier 15 single-family development is mostly undeveloped, so most of the lots are not built upon. So the fact that we started this process probably two years ago, they could have purchased their lot.
I know, but let's not get into.
Oh, no, 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 what I'm saying is, they probably didn't get noticed because they just acquired the lot, so I'm happy to meet with them, that's what I'm saying.
No, and, and I know, I knew you would be.
Yes.
I just wanted to let them know that maybe more than a card, because I, I know you're always willing to meet with the neighbors. You're always doing the, the neighborhood meetings and you do a great job at it and you give great information. So I think maybe once the two of you connect, you'll.
Yeah, I'll meet with them right now.
You can alleviate maybe any of their, their concerns.
Absolutely.
I want to, and you do meet with the neighbors and meet with them quite a bit, and, and meet with us as well. So I think the reach out does pay off, and I appreciate you continuing to do that, so.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jobin.
Thank you. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 14 through 18 are approved, 7 to 0. Item 19, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and an R7 district located northwest of 12th and Williams Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communication and opposition.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yeah, Tom McCloy, the 3814 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Thanks for having me. Sorry, I'm not used to getting called so quickly. I'm here as a proponent, obviously owner and developer of this project, has been here a couple of different times. I, I did note in the record an objection from a resident across the street that the project perhaps was blocking their view. I, just quickly in, in response to that, in case you guys had any questions, the, the property across the street, if we can see this here. The, the, the location is here, this is a few decades ago, a couple decades or so ago, picture of an aerial shot. You'll notice the property was full of houses from a really, you know, probably turn of the century all the way throughout it. The gentleman's over here objecting to it, at least indicating his view is going to be blocked, which for, for many decades, anyone who lived there did have that view blocked. And in fact, just as recently as a couple of years ago, this was a structure that did sit on that location, direct, almost directly across the street from the gentleman, which was a, a home that was there. In response to that, we really tried to make an effort to fit in the neighborhood and be consistent. This is a corner looking down, this direction is down 12th Street. So working with planning department and the like, we wanted to make sure that we were keeping in context with the neighborhood and building really similar type of, these are rentals, but similar type of structures that were there historically that we thought would make sense for the neighborhood and try to be sensitive that along the way. So if there's any questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 20, a resolution to approve the Blackstone Townhomes Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 501 South 38th Street, an amount up to $600, or $765,000.
Go ahead, Don.
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, on behalf of the project, Blackstone Townhomes. You're probably familiar with the site at 38th and Dewey. The developer, Jay Naudle, had been through previously with a bit larger 14-unit condominium project that was approved by the city. The plans have been rethought and reworked, rescaled. We now have a proposal for a smaller six-unit for-sale townhome project. The six units are three-bedroom, three-bath, each with a two-car garage. Developer Jay Naudle, total project investment, total project cost is a little north of 4.3 million. They are requesting $765,000 in TIF support. I should note also that they are, the project includes a little more than $206,000 in public improvements, which is fairly a substantial amount for a project of this size and scale. Included in that is some street lighting, sidewalk curb gutter repairs, but also underground utility line along Dewey Street. Project meets the criteria for our TIF program. It's been reviewed and approved by the TIF committee and the planning board. It's appropriate use for the site, complies with the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Ted Zetsmuth, Naude Companies, 2285 South 67th Street, in Exarban Village. I think Don summed it up pretty well, but we're certainly here for any questions that you might have. Appreciate your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, 68132. I'm generally opposed to tax increment, particularly this one. I used to live in that area. I do not see how that really fits in with the architecture of this single-family type homes in, in that area. Some are multifamily. Some very nice, older apartment units. And they don't have that kind of parking spaces. It's going to increase the traffic an awful lot for those people. I would not buy a house in that area now because of it and the other development along Farnham there. But I just want you to know that I have done research in, over the past few years. I'm not totally knowledgeable about it. If you do your own search on the internet, you'll find some articles which I have included for submission today. To back me up. And the overall gist of all these articles is that it is a shift of investment from private to public. And when it shifts to public, it means my tax dollars, basically. You people don't like to hear that. I have been said to be untruthful about that. But I don't believe that these developers are going to stay in Omaha and pay the higher property taxes for the entire cost of that project. When you insinuate that I'm lying... When you insinuate that I'm lying, that our property taxes will also go up if I live in that area, I'm not the one that's maybe being untruthful, I believe you are. I don't believe they're going to pay all the property taxes to pay off that project. And I don't think the other citizens of Omaha will either. So I think you need a better discussion so the citizens who want to petition you understand it. If I'm a liar, then fine, I'm a liar. But I don't think so. You need to prove that. One article says, under the title, "Tax Increments for Dummies." The other was "Tax Financing in Nebraska." Each one has about five or six different stories of experts. Best practices, if you want to call it that, that know more about it than I do, but if you read them, they say pretty much what I'm saying, only they don't say it in English. Future tax dollars. Doesn't mean his tax dollars. It means the people that live in the area, maybe the whole city. The third article is "How to Analyze Tax Increment Financing Projects." This particular article has to do with tax financing project in Missouri, but the general principles are taught in various centers around the country.
Thank you.
So feel free to investigate for yourselves. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call. Pete Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to note that a couple of us, including myself, did not support this project in some of the initial stages here, just thinking enough compromise hadn't been made with some of the neighborhood concerns that were posed through the Planning Board process and through initial city council stages. But I am pleased to support it here today. I do commend you for continuing that work and continuing to try to find middle ground that I think this does represent and is obvious by the fact there is no opposition here today. So I commend you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Item 21, a resolution to approve the Clove Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 7837 Dodge Street and 8004 Farnham Drive, an amount up to $4,456,000. A's communication and support.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. We'll first hear from Mr. Seaton from the Planning Department, then the applicant's representative, Ryan Spellman, who's registered by video conferencing.
Very good. Yes, thank you, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, for the Clove Apartment TIF Redevelopment Project Plan. This is a project on West Dodge. It's just a little east of the Children's Hospital. It includes two parcels. The parcel fronting Dodge had been occupied by a Village Inn restaurant. The parcel facing south to Farnham Drive used to contain a roadway inn motel, which incidentally had been kind of a source of problems for some of the neighboring properties in the area. Both those sites have now been cleared and the proposed project will be a new construction, five-story apartment building with about 175 units, looking at about 169 parking stalls plus some additional stalls, maybe another 12 on Farnham Drive. This project includes $500,000, half a million dollars in public improvements for this project, which involves a number of undergrounding of utilities, some sidewalks. There's some city-owned land right along Dodge that will see improvements in landscaping. Developer Jay Development Company, managed by Julie Stovniak and Jim Royer. This project has a total cost of $34,330,000. The applicants are requesting $4,456,000 in TIF support. Project meets the criteria of our TIF program. It complies with our city master plan and we ask for your approval.
And it's within a block of the Mass Transit Stop, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're getting more density where we have our mass transit.
Thank you. Mr. Spellman, welcome. Name, address, and any testimony.
Thank you. Ryan Spellman, on behalf of the owner, Jay Development Company, 2430 South 73rd Street, Suite 200. Don summed it up nicely. I appreciate the council's recent approval of our TOD rezoning. We're certainly excited to be one of the first, if not the first, project to take off under that new zoning, which we think is great for the city. And I am here for any questions that may arise.
Thanks. And just for the record, you're number two.
Well, I guess I'll have to live with that.
That's okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm supportive of this project. I think it is a good reinvestment where reinvestment is needed and has already cleared, as Mr. Seaton noted, where the old Village Inn used to be. So I thank Jay Development for their interest and I definitely support the principles behind transit-oriented development that we adopted to help make this, something like this possible. But I did want to note that it also could have been a good example of affordable housing and new development along this corridor. It's 175 market-rate apartments, which I think will be nice. But as we continue to think about how to do this better as a city, an incentive or a requirement in a project like this could have made a difference as well. And so I just wanted to note that as we continue our work on that issue, which continues on Tuesday in our Planning Committee meeting, talking about that very issue around tax increment financing, but also additional possibilities in city financing to help address that issue. Even as I know, housing advocates continue to work on their end with some potential advancements as well. So I do see great potential for that going forward and support this here today and would motion to approve it.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero. Item 22, to consider a Class CK liquor license application for Burrito Envy located at 12321 West Maple Road, A's communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing on item 22 begins at this time. We have Mr. Mike Kelly registered for the applicant. Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, you're recognized.
Sorry about that. Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is a new Mexican restaurant in West Omaha. We are here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 23, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Gather Omaha located at 1108 Howard Street.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. We'll open the public hearing with proponent, Mr. Mike Kelly, for the applicant.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. And this is a new restaurant proposal in the old market. And we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, seven to zero. Item 24, to consider a Class CK liquor license application for Lululeah's Breakfast, Brunch, and Bar located at 902 Dodge Street, Unit 101.
Public hearing on item 24 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mike Moylan from Shamrock Development, 902 Dodge Street.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm happy here to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Great. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, seven to zero. Item 25, to consider a Class CK liquor license application for Palmos located at 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3107.
Public hearing on item 25 begins at this time. We have Joshua Martinez registered to participate by video conferencing. Mr. Martinez, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Joshua Martinez, 17102 Patrick Avenue. I'm the owner of Palmos Restaurants and we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call. Does your motion contemplate waiver of Rule 7?
Yes.
Did the second? Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 26, to consider a Class D liquor license application for All Good Food located at 2521 South 132nd Street.
Public hearing on item 26 begins at this time. Call with proponents by beginning with Clark Ozan, applicant. Hope I pronounced that right.
Hi, this is actually Jake Ozan with Peta, Nebraska, 2521 South 132nd Street.
Okay.
And I'm here for any questions you guys might have.
Okay, was there just a typo on the name or is Clark related to you?
He's my brother, his boss man. He's actually to my left over here, too.
Oh.
But we use my computer, so I won the video.
Huh. Who's the older brother?
I am, but we look like twins quite a bit, so.
Well, welcome to the city council. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 26 is approved, seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item 27, to consider a Class I liquor license application for Land Yacht located at 1905 South 67th Street, A's communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
The public hearing on item 27 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mark Ringsdorf, 19621 Leavenworth Street, for Land Yacht Hospitality, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 28 and 29 can be considered together for Class D liquor license applications for Speedy Mart 2882 located at 5120 South 118th Street and Speedy Mart 2886 located at 1202 South 13th Street.
The public hearing on items 28 and 29 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, John Diltsaver, J.O.H.N.D.I.L.S.A.V.E.R., 8400 I Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm with Western Oil, too. Speedy Mart available if there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 30 through 37 were held on April 13, 2021. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
I think we were going to remove item 40. Did you remove 40?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. The public hearings on agenda items 38 through 39 and 41 through 49 begin at this time. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. The public hearing is closed. Is that motion approved 38 through 39 and 41 through 49?
41 through 49.
Is that the same with the second? Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. You'll have to make a...
So item 40 is going to be withdrawn from the agenda, but since it's advertised, if you came to speak about this agenda and wish to do so, you do have the right, but I fully expect that this will be withdrawn. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, is there a motion to allow withdrawal?
No.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 50, an ordinance loving a special tax and assessment on certain lots for sidewalk construction, group number 2020-01, A's amendment of the whole requested by the Public Works Department.
What's the pleasure of the council? Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 51, an ordinance to acquire private property for the 48th Street Q to Harrison Street's Public Improvements Project.
The public hearing on item 51 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents wishing to be heard on this item? The public hearing is closed.
Item 52, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Signal Infrastructure Phase C1 Project.
The public hearing on item 52 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to PVS Technologies in the amount of $567,500 for ferric chloride.
The public hearing on item 53 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 54 and 55. Item 54, an ordinance approving a People Plan Delivery Agreement with the Omaha Housing Authority and 75 North Revitalization Corporation. Item 55, an ordinance approving a master development agreement with Omaha Housing Authority and Bryn Shore Development LLC.
The public hearing on items 54 and 55 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Sidney Franklin with 75 North, available if there are any questions. Good afternoon, Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the City Planning Department. In 2019, the city and OHA were awarded a Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant. There are three key focus areas of the implementation grants and of the Choice Neighborhoods Grants in general. They are neighborhood, people, and housing. These two agreements are for the implementation of the people and housing elements of these agreements of this grant. With the People Plan Agreement, 75 North and OHA have been working diligently to survey residents of Spencer Homes to identify their needs and wants and partner with agencies to deliver programs and services to match those needs and wants. Both OHA and 75 North are in attendance. With the housing agreement, the Omaha Housing Authority selected Bryn Shore through a competitive procurement process prior to us applying for the implementation grant. In fact, Bryn Shore scored more capacity points on the grant application than the city did. Both Bryn Shore, OHA, 75 North, and Shorewood Foundation are here as well today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone from Bryn Shore wants to tell us a little about your company? If you get that high of a rating, I just have to know a little bit more about who you are.
Hi, Todd Lieberman, Bryn Shore Development. I'm an executive vice president at Bryn Shore. We are located in suburban Chicago, but I actually office out of Kansas City, Missouri. We've been working with 75 North for the last, yeah, seven years and work around the country and specialize in partnerships with nonprofits, housing authorities, and cities to implement master-planned communities and affordable and mixed-income housing developments. master planned communities and affordable and mixed income housing developments. So the work we're doing with the city and the housing authority with the Choice Neighborhoods Grant is consistent with about 20 years of track record in cities around the Midwest and now nationally. So we're very excited to continue our work in Omaha and thank you for consideration of this request.
Thank you. Can we have your address again, please?
Sure. 222 Gregory Boulevard, Suite 323, Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Joni Poor with the Omaha Housing Authority, 1823 Harney Street. I'm also accompanied by Brian Hanson, our general counsel, if there are any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just, we talked about this a little bit this morning and just for the record, I just wanted someone to, I think maybe some from the Planning Department, maybe, or 75 North, either one. When we're talking about the Spencer projects and the residents that live there, when we start developing that area, just for the record, are they going to have the first right of refusal on those properties? I need somebody to say yes rather than...
Mr. Hanson, why don't you come up? Just because he's a constituent, I wanted to favor him.
Thank you. Brian Hanson, H-A-N-S-E-N, 1823 Harney Street. I'm the general counsel for the Omaha Housing Authority. The simple answer is yes. Relocation in these situations involves many regulations and it also requires that we follow the Uniform Relocation Act, which is a federal law. But in addition to that, there's additional requirements that are tied to the grant and one of those is that the residents have a right to return to that neighborhood. So...
And that's even for the people who have already left, right?
Yeah, so in a situation where maybe somebody's waiting for a development to be finished, they could be temporarily relocated and then they'd have the right to return. We pay all those moving costs. They also have the opportunity, if they so choose, to take a Section 8 voucher if they want to go in that direction and move away from that particular neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing no lights, next item.
Item 56, in ordinance to accept the bid from Solid Surface Care, Inc. to provide carpet, rug, and upholstery cleaning services at various Omaha Police Library facilities.
The public hearing on item 56 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 57, in ordinance to approve the elimination of daily overdue fines for library material and to approve the forgiveness and waiver of all outstanding debt from overdue fines.
The public hearing on item 57 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Oh, Laura Marlane, our wonderful director. You're recognized.
Yes, we are looking to eliminate the collection of daily overdue fines because it's presented a serious barrier to access for many of our patrons.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Just that in the, in the zip codes of our most economically challenged patrons, 61% of them are blocked from accessing our services because of this. And the total cost of fines is 0.33% of our entire budget. So it's not going to be a hardship for us to make this a possibility for the library.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents wishing to be heard on this item? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm supportive of this for those same reasons that the director, Marlane, just noted. I think forgiving the small debt that's owed is far outweighed by encouraging folks to come back and use our libraries and to return materials that may be outstanding. I noted the story that was a few weeks ago where a book was returned after 50 years, I think it was, which was pretty amazing. I was going to ask her a few stats in terms of what that encompasses, but I think she observed just a minute ago that it's a very small portion, 0.33% of the budget. So I think well worth this new measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you, Laura. I just wanted to confirm and I think I saw, or I know it only accounts for about 0.33% of the budget, but also how much does it cost for the collections in order to collect?
That's something we haven't done, but San Diego Public Library had done a study and they pay about, it cost them about a million dollars a year to collect approximately $675,000 a year.
Okay, so, and I just also wanted to clarify, if somebody doesn't return the item at all, they are still charged for the replacement value. Is that correct?
Yes. This is just daily overdue fines. People will still be responsible for returning the materials or they be billed to them and they'd be billed for damaged materials as well.
Okay, so this, this is just limited to just the fines?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just add, I was somewhat surprised to receive the number of contacts I did on this item from my constituents overwhelmingly in support of this proposal. Not one person opposed, so I think it's a good idea that we remove barriers to accessing our library and, and this is a good thing, so. No further lights, next item.
One public hearing can be held for items 58 and 59. Item 58, in ordinance to amend the agreement with HTI Labs for an amended amount of $116,693. Item 59 is in ordinance to approve an agreement with HTI Labs in the amount of $247,372 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's fiscal year 2020 Saki Grant.
The public hearing on items 58 and 59 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 60 through 63. Ordinance is approving an amendment to interlocal agreements relating to Keno proceeds with Douglas County, the City of Bennington, the Village of Sterling, and the Village of Eagle.
The public hearing on items 60 through, is it 63? 63 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 64 through 96 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Brennan. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:51.[1506.75]